Good evening and welcome to the March 16th meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. We're also joining tonight with the Finance Committee at the beginning of our meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which is general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And at this moment, I'd like to take attendance. I'll start with Selectman Triano.
Present.
Selectman LeBlanc.
Present.
Selectman Daniels.
Present.
Selectman Sad.
Present.
And I am Selectman Lamash. I am also here. So that is a full board tonight. Thank you all for coming. So we'll open it up to Jen Callahan, our town manager, and Katie McKenna, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the Board of Selectmen and also our esteemed colleagues on the Finance Committee. We have been meeting diligently, as you are aware, with our normal schedule for actually putting together not only the budget for operational needs, but also our capital budget in advance of our annual town meeting. And per the charter, the requirement is for the town manager to present at least 45 days in advance of town meeting. The recommendations the manager has put forward, and as you know, our departments have been individually presenting to the Finance Committee. And like anything, there's many months and many meetings that take place. We'll talk a little bit about that budget schedule as I go forward. But I'm hoping to create what was considered to be a very well-received budget presentation last year and the year before. And one of the things I think the Finance Committee Chairman and other members have acknowledged is that we've improved on our overall financial management strategies and budget development strategies as we've gone forward. So with that, I would like to start by acknowledging the fact that we have a budget message that accompanies the warrant when it goes forward and also the budget. It's a seven-page, single-spaced document that goes over the items that we believe are important in delivering to the townspeople, and that also includes items that we now have also incorporated into our new financial management and operations policies, which we recently adopted to use best practices as we go forward for our financial management and budget planning. With that, I'm going to attempt to do a screen share here, if you can just wait one minute. And we will start with the, let's see, from the beginning. As you can see, we have some items that will hopefully keep us awake as we go forward. Once again, this is meant to be an overarching presentation. Obviously, many of the details that get decided by the Finance Committee, which is the sole committee that gets to make the recommendation to the townspeople of whether they approve of the budget in the way that it's presented and the items it puts forward. And of course, we also have the other board that actually looks at the items that get put on a town meeting warrant that have the ability to make those recommendations, and that would include the planning board when it comes to matters of zoning and the like. So let's start here by saying this is our fiscal 2022 budget presentation. It is my third annual budget that I am putting together, and I think you'll be very pleased in acknowledging and seeing and recognizing some of the wonderful trends that we have been able to do in a very short period of time. And that is not one person. It's a collective effort that gets done by those that are on the Finance Committee, the very esteemed department heads that work very hard to make sure they advocate for their budgetary needs, and also the Finance Director who works very closely with me in trying to not only drive up our revenues, but also to budget in a very conservative way so that we can actually build our reserves. With that, I will begin by saying this budget presentation is a summary of a number of items. I'm just going to move my gallery here, if I can put it up top, if you just bear with me for a second, or below. So the budget presentation has six components that I'm going to go over tonight. One deals with financial policies, goals, and objectives, the budget process timeline. We're going to overreach or overlook at some of the Oxford demographics that are important with our budgeting, that we take into account revenue, state aid, and savings trends. We're going to touch on. We're also going to talk about a summary of the budget proposal, and we're also going to talk a little bit about our operation and capital budgetary needs in the major areas for changes. So Oxford's fiscally prudent path to a balanced budget includes a number of things. One, I had already touched upon the fact that the charter makes provisions so that the townspeople will actually have a balanced budget that's presented to them that they may be able to vote on in the first week of May annually. Obviously, in the past, we had some kind of loose financial provisions and policies. This year, using a $20,000 community compact grant, we have been able to, through many months, and looking at the financial departments that would weigh in on policy development, namely our treasurer, collector, accounting, and assessor's office, we have developed our first Financial Management and Operations Policy Guide, or manual. It was adopted this past March 2021. But prior to that, obviously, we were looking at all of the different aspects that a department should be using, not only to do normal, everyday, routine, standard operations, but also on how to project and work actively with us as part of the financial team in putting forward a budget. That means with financial prudence that we would look at things such as our reserve funds, stabilization, OPEB liabilities, capital projects, and contingencies. Those are very important for us to consider as we move forward with a budget projection. So if we're going to use best practice budget goals, I want to just touch on five of them. Basically, our budget should be able to maintain essential resident and business services in a most cost-effective manner. We should also provide proper fiscal management and oversight in all levels. We do not want to increase expenditures greater than what we have for recurring available revenues, and we don't want to use one-time revenues for operating expenses to the greatest extent possible. And we want to present a balanced budget that has realistic projections and not by under-budgeting expenses as much as possible. So therefore, it's a flexible document in the sense that we may get more information as we approach the May annual town meeting. This past year has been a very, very unusual year, as you know, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which really turned our operations upside down and made us rethink the way that we do our operations and conduct businesses for the community, but it also has made us rethink the way that we're going to approach our financial future. So there is several key objectives that I just want to touch upon this evening that drive this budget. The first is using conservative financial forecasting. I know the Chairman of the Finance Committee understands that very well, and he constantly impresses upon each of the departments and the manager to approach our budget development with conservative financial forecasting. That means when you're using financial forecasting, like we have been looking at this past year, the pandemic made us actually really hit a pause button last spring where we were forced to develop budgets without state numbers. We were actually prodded by state officials to look at cutting our budgets by 20% to 30% below level funding, going back to the time period for financial budgets that were encountered during the two back-to-back recessions between the years of 2006 and 2009. And with that, and knowing that we did not have state figures, we cut over $1 million out of the budget last year. It was extremely painful. It was not easy. That occurred after furloughing people who could not necessarily work in the same conditions they had before because of the pandemic. And it also meant that we had people who couldn't return to work because some of those functions that we were actually supporting in a very normal, traditional way were no longer happening on a regular basis, and we didn't know when that was going to actually return to a normal state. But having said that, it has meant that as departments think about this, we know that conservative financial forecasting continues to be very important. That means we will continue to have a focus on building our reserves, maintaining our increased free cash levels, seeking out one-time revenues as best as possible, leveraging grants, and securing and maximizing federal relief. That last one will potentially have very big implications for us as we get closer to town meeting, and I will touch upon that in the presentation after a phone call I had with our local congressman on Friday. Increased local receipts is another key budget objective. Obviously, we want to support recovery of local businesses as we're coming out of this pandemic. We know that negotiating host agreements is very important for helping us drive up our revenues and our local receipts, which are very important to our overall budget contributions for revenue. We also are focusing on tax collections, and in particular, since I've come here, I've worked with a changeover in the Treasurer Collector's Office, and I have worked closely with our new collector treasurer, although she's coming up on almost two years now, where we're going to be conducting a land auction, and we have actually retained new tax title legal representation that actually has been very beneficial for us as we go about making sure we reduce our overall overdue tax collections. That has important implications for increasing our local revenues. Increasing enforcement and reviewing our fees and fines are always important to departments that are charged statutorily with enforcing specific areas, whether it's public health or whether it's Title V or whether it's building and inspectional services. And we recently have done that, particularly in the area of the Board of Health, and the Building Commissioner has been looking at reviewing and revising those as he goes along as well. Renegotiating agreements, that's very important, and was very important this past year in looking at not just how we negotiate such things as insurance coverage, but also how we would negotiate potential agreements, whether they are a solar tax agreement or tax increment finance agreement or a host agreement for marijuana. All of those things are important, and when we can go back to them and generate more revenue at the local level, it helps us in the long run. Investing in infrastructure is the third key budget objective. When I'm looking at this, you have to think about just how much we are doing in this town in the last three years. It's really very, very unique in the sense that we have leveraged as much as we can any additional funds that we're garnering through our free cash and our grants, and we're leveraging those resources to fix roads, bridges, and dams, although we have a never-ending, it seems, project log for that. We're actually funding overdue building repairs that this town has not seen in a long time because of deferred maintenance, and also coming out of those two back-to-back recessions made it more difficult, and so there's a lot of deferred maintenance. We're replacing things such as our communications for our dispatch, for E911 systems, and we're upgrading our fleet, and we're implementing energy reduction plans to save the town money while investing in the future infrastructure of our buildings, and we're maintaining maintenance schedules. And that has had actually very significant implications for renegotiating our insurance premium coverages, and I have something to share a little bit later about how that has actually been very positive for the town, and those particular insurance companies have indicated so. So the budget process steps. This is also a budget presentation, not just for the two boards that are in front of us today, but also for the general public to understand at least the general steps we take. September 14th of 2020, we had our state certification numbers come in. I want to just really credit the fact that all of the departments have worked very, very hard in improving our state certifications to be earlier than they've ever been, which helps us to be able to actually set the tone and an understanding of where we're going to go for our budget development. So it allows us to start those discussions in earnest much earlier. But of course, before that, we had already started to talk about our capital needs with the Finance Committee with regards to a five-year capital plan. Our Finance Director sends out our budget worksheets in November, which did occur, and of course, we asked for those budget worksheets from department heads to come back to us in December. That leads to a budget review of meetings that I have with our Finance Director and every department head. They're extensive meetings. We go over a lot of detail. We have a lot of supporting documents, and it's a very important listening session and also a strategy-building session to figure out, are there ways to still meet department needs, perhaps outside of operational budgets, in the development of an expenditure budget that is going to be helpful to meet their needs? Obviously, we have already started our Finance Committee meetings. They began in February and March with regards specifically to the budget development. Then, of course, I'm here on March 16th to present the budget. Just so the community knows, our warrant will be closing because the Selectmen have established that date of March 30th, coming up on 2021. The Finance Committee hearing, which looks at our capital budget needs and advances those, will be in April, and the Finance Committee recommendations for both budget and capital will come out in the month of April. And of course, we get to town meeting on May 5th of this year, which it will be again at the high school. We just don't know whether we inside, outside, or inside in the gym, or inside at the auditorium. But we don't know that until we can actually see what restrictions will be placed upon us. We would love to go back to the way we were doing it prior, and we'll work very hard to see if we can make that happen. With any rate, it will be on that date. The demographics that are important in building this budget is just so that people understand that the town of Oxford continues to be a growing, affordable community in which to live. We have over 14,000 residents. The average tax bill is a little over 4,300. The state's average tax bill is a little over $6,300 or $6,400 per household. Our tax rate this year is $16.53, and I give a lot of credit to, after having changed our entire appraisal and property assessment software over last year, which was no easy task. Our assessor did a fantastic job with the Assistant Assessor and also with other departments in being able to move that software in a direction that will be more user-friendly for the residents of this community. Average household is about 263,000 for the value of a home, our total taxable assessment for the entire community. It was a big number, as you can see. We're not talking millions. We get into billions. And what I would like to say too is the percent of the residential tax base that is contributing basically to this budget and in comparison to commercial, industrial, it basically is 80% of our tax base. And so that's a huge amount that comes from our residents that are here in town. The unemployment rate, I want to just touch on this because more than a year ago, even in the middle of the pandemic at the start, we were talking about an increase rate from the threes up to 5.7, and this year, our average unemployment rate all the way up to December was 8.7%. That's the unemployment rate, of course, is really also tightly attached to what's been happening with the pandemic. Our labor force is still holding firm at about 8,200 people. Obviously, that labor force number, I'm sure, is down because of COVID, and that will have big implications as we go back to getting people back to work, particularly those that will work in businesses and commercial industries here in town. Our outstanding debt is about $8.5 million, both long and short term. I will talk and touch a little bit about that later on, about those numbers actually are very positive for us in terms of future borrowing, and we still maintain an AA3 bond rating, and that is, shows that we have excellent financial stability and we have solid financial footing. In the future, we are talking about actually going back out because that has been a rating that has been done quite a few years ago, and I believe with all of the things that we have done financially, I'm quite confident that the bond rating agencies will actually put the town of Oxford in a more favorable position with regards to the rating systems that they use. But having said that, let's move into the budgeted revenues of fiscal year 22. We're going to use conservative estimates because we still are in a time period where our budgets and the state budgets are a little bit in flux, and we don't know exactly what our receipts will be as they come in, and neither does the state, but we have a better, a little bit more confident, I guess, appraisal of where we're at as we go forward, both at the local and state level. Our tax levy includes new growth and debt exclusion. That tax levy, as you see there, comprises about 61% of the budget that we're going to put forward. We're going to be using the Governor's numbers for state aid, even though the legislature still has yet to take that up. A number of years ago, in the previous recessions, the legislature joined with the Governor in creating what they call the consensus revenue tax factor or growth factor, and they are putting that at about 3.5% for overall growth in the Commonwealth, and that is going to be shared with the House of Representatives and the Senate so that we don't get this ping-pong effect where the Governor puts out numbers and, you know, each legislative branch tries to overbest those numbers. That is very difficult for municipalities to plan, and so that has pretty much been scrapped in previous years, and so the revenue consensus figure shows a little bit of fluctuation, but nothing that makes us radically change the projected path we are on in adopting the figures from the Governor. Having said that, state aid is comprising about 32% of our budget, and it does so pretty much on that level each year. And we do have indirect cost transfers that are paid for sewer in the general fund. They are about 1%, and our local receipts make up about 7% of this budget that I'm going to be speaking about this evening. So when we're looking at the budget, state aid revenues are going to be very important. They are important because they're a source that gets really relied upon, but it's not the biggest source that we have to rely upon. But it's very important, particularly for our public education. In fiscal year 21, we had about $10.5 million in Chapter 78. That's the educational aid that we rely upon in our public schools and our regional vocational schools. This year, the Governor's budget is saying $10.6 million, which is about a $46,890 increase from last year. Unrestricted lottery aid, also known as our government aid or local aid, that is driven in large part by lottery receipts for the state. Last year, we were at $2.2 million for the town of Oxford. This year, it's looking about $2.3 million, which is about a $76,000 increase. Our Chapter Highway 90 money is actually down a little bit this year, from $510,000 to $508,000. It's about $2,600 decrease. For all of us who are really eager to get our roads fixed, this is one of the reasons why we keep impressing upon the public that we just don't get enough money from the state to really not only fix the current conditions of our roads, but to really make improvements for the future of our roadway system and bridge system in town. Now, moving on, I just want to touch upon how we use those revenues and how we're going to actually disburse general fund expenditures. The budget that we're looking at is based upon revenues with our state aid in all of those areas. We're looking at about $42.8 million in revenues. The budget we're putting together is being projected here at $40.8 million. What that means is that we have several areas that are, the money is dispersed, and if we show percentages, it's just, I think, an important way of trying to gauge the priorities of a community. Obviously, public education is very important. Despite declining enrollments, people move to a community and want to have excellent public schools, and, you know, since becoming town manager here, I've worked very closely with two superintendents, not only to gauge what their needs are, but to actually improve on the funding that, and the funding expectations that they're striving for to help meet their goals, because the school committee puts together their budget as well. Having met with the superintendent and looking at the figures that we're going to discuss a little bit more in earnest, the education aid for our town takes up about 50% of the expenditures we propose in this budget, and that will be an increase of about $609,000 to the district public schools. And of course, we have our regional public school district in which we are partner with many other towns, and so that cost is not, or that expenditure is not as high, but it's still very, and it averages at about $1.5 million for this coming year. The next largest area for expenditures, because we have employees, is employee benefits. That includes everything from health benefits, retirement, any costs that are associated with benefits would be included in this particular figure. I will go over some of those in earnest when we get further along in this budget discussion. Obviously, public safety is very important to our community, represents about 10% of the budget, followed quite closely by Public Works, which has a very expansive scope with many divisions within the Department of Public Works, and of course, has our largest, aside from the school district, number of employees. Then we have the general town government, which encompasses basically municipal operations, and it's followed by small percentages human services, like our Council on Aging and our Culture and Recreation divisions, which include our community center and our senior center. And we have debt service, which is also something that we have to account for when we borrow money, or we, whether it's short or long term, we have annual payments, and we need to include those in our overall budget. Here, I'm looking at what is an important slide to once again highlight how terrific the trends have been for this community since we have put ourselves in an aggressive schedule of increasing our stabilization account. If you can look, you will see where we were in 2014, and then you will see a skyrocketing beginning in 2019. This has been, I think, in large part due to the fact that we have maintained our focus. The Department of Revenue recommends that a community be between 5% of their annual budget operations. The stabilization fund as of today is at $1.5 million. We are going to be recommending in this budget an additional $250,000 to our stabilization account, which will bring us up to $1.7 million, which is 4.2%. I'm inching closer and closer to getting to that point where we can at least say we've reached that benchmark. When you think about being at $122,000 in 2014 and getting to where we are in just, you know, three and a half years, it's impressive, and we couldn't do it without having the focus and support of the Finance Committee, along with the budgetary policies we put together for a continued investment on a yearly basis or a policy in which we make those investments each year into that fund. Now, the stabilization fund is really considered our rainy day fund for the edification of people in the community. It is there to show the strength and adaptability for the town, no matter what it might encounter that's unpredicted. It could be an incredible downward trend that is associated with not getting money because of the pandemic. It could be because we have a natural disaster that strikes, and we need to rely upon that fund. There could be a whole number of reasons, but it's there, but there are high thresholds in which to withdraw the money, usually two-thirds town vote, so that the money just doesn't get used in ways that it shouldn't. There are communities that wind up using this stabilization fund for their operational needs, which is a big, huge no-no, and that is one of the things that stabilization accounts are more for, those unforeseen, unpredictable events and not for regular operational needs. The next item that shows the importance of how we put our savings together and where we're at is our OPEB fund, which is our other pension employment benefits or post-employment benefits. And as you can see, starting in 2019, that fund was at about $3.7 million, and going into this year, at the moment, with our contribution that we have recommended in this budget, we will likely be achieving for this upcoming year $5,87,092. Once again, that $5.00 Um, once again, that uh five point one million to three point seven is um showing that we're putting money aside uh for the future liabilities that we may have for our retirees um and uh employees uh that may have a pension and uh retirement health costs uh that the town will, you know, continue to be responsible for. The next trend that I think is really important because this all has to do with how we forecast and how we have confidence in this budget that we're presenting of this evening on behalf of departments in the management. Um, the Oxford certified free cash trend uh continues to be one, very good news for the town. Um, we got certified early once again in just September, as I had mentioned. And that um we um had certified two point two million dollars in uh free cash. Again, free cash is not free, huh, it's all of those accounts um and additional monies that come in that are not necessarily incorporated into the budgetary um expectations and figures. So when we have an, an unexpected payment, that will get certified as free cash. When we chase down monies that are owed to us that are reimbursements, whether it's from a grant or whether it's um, you know, for a liability, um those things will get put into our free cash numbers. Um, if there's something left over, someone in their budget doesn't uh expend everything, that gets put into free cash numbers. So it's very important to be very diligent, um not only to chase new revenues down, which will add to their free cash numbers, but to chase down monies that are owed to the town. We have been doing that aggressively um since two thousand and eighteen. Um, and I know that our finance director will tell you that because we are constantly in touch with one another and making sure we drive those numbers up as much as possible. Free cash is a one-time revenue source. We use that revenue source more for one-time expenditures that are not necessarily operational. Operational budgetary needs should be included in the operational budget uh and it should not be relying on one-time uh sources like free cash. However, free cash can be extremely important when we start talking about one-time needs, including our capital needs um and investments that we need to make that um normally we might have to borrow for or ask the townspeople um for an additional um tax um maneuver. And uh this prevents us from having to do that for many, many items that uh we don't need to go out to borrow for now because we're able to address them um in our five-year capital plan using uh free cash and also using that free cash to put away to those savings accounts that I just explained to you are, are in a good trend. So, new growth is always something we look at. Uh, new growth by the fiscal year allows uh what is there for our two and a half um percent increase on top of the normal tax levy um and um and above and beyond that. And also, it is um, it's subject to how we budget for what we think is going to come in in terms of um the uh tax assessments. And so when we have a new growth, we're looking at a couple different numbers. We're looking at budgeting this year two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars um for our new growth. Um, if you look at this chart, you'll see going back to two thousand and eleven, it's been pretty much um somewhere between two hundred thousand and um uh two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we had two blip-ups, um, one was the year of two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, and that was because some uh large uh businesses came in and TIF agreements um were uh coming due to the town so that there was a, quite a bit of a, a large increase um where the assessments uh came in much higher. So that's unusual unless you have a lot of uh business um in and property growth um in the community that gets assessed. So those numbers, two hundred and twenty-five plus two hundred and twenty-five, um, those get added to our tax levy so that we can um count on those kinds of figures for our budget development. Now, some people would say, well, we're bringing in new businesses, our local receipts, shouldn't they be higher? After the pandemic of last year, we unequivocally state at this point, it's better to be safe than sorry. Um, yes, we're bringing on new um potential revenues uh for fiscal year twenty-two. We have a cannabis manufacturer coming online, a cultivation uh center that more than likely, um hopefully, and it be in its uh beginning stages um next year. We have a potential for an eight-unit subdivision um on Kathy's Way, which recently had applied for an earth removal permit, which we know um is going to be uh fast um followed by a, a proposal to the planning board for eight new homes. We have some restaurant expansions um that are taking place uh as we speak. And we have some new restaurants uh that are going into um some um buildings. Uh, we also have some new office spaces and small businesses that are, are happening. Um, our actual uh planning and economic development uh director uh has provided me with some new um potential uh businesses, including um a self-storage facility, uh three small offices and a barber shop. Uh, we are also having some uh main street renovations for upgrades that will have some new tenants in it. We have a new roofing business, uh pest control and auto service business um that is occurring here in town and a motorcycle repair shop. And uh we're going to continue to, to look at some of these areas that we can expand. Um, I think I've mentioned in my Board of Selectmen meeting that we just received a local um rapid recovery um planning uh technical assistance grant that is gonna look to uh helping us um help businesses not just get back on their feet, but help us actually promote new businesses here in town. All of those will help generate increased revenues in the future, but we can only rely on what we have really currently and what we have in our possession. So at this point in time, I think I'd like to just start by kind of going through the budget. Um, and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have the greater detail. Um, what I will say about this particular budget is that, you know, we're looking at the major budget expenditures and the changes that may take place in each area. And so when there's really no, you know, major change, I'm not gonna get into the details of, oh, we just went up, you know, five hundred dollars in a supplies account and the like. I wanna look at some of the major things that have been brought to light by department heads on what they think of their needs and then try to balance that with what we're incorporating in this recommended budget that's here this evening. So the moderator as a particular area of our uh budget has really no changes to it. Um, the Selectmen budget after meeting with the chairman of the Select Board does have um uh two slight adjustments to it. One, um, even though it, the bottom line uh pretty much uh stays the same, it's actually a little less than last year. But one of the things that I did uh speak to the chairman about was last year uh as part of this over one million dollar uh reduction that we made. Uh, we tried in the fall, once the legislature had uh made a determination for local aid, which wasn't as bad as they had projected. Um, the first place we went to try to restore uh some semblance of balance back into departments that had been reduced um and where employees had not had uh step raises um at all, uh we restored those in the fall. But there was one area that we had made uh an adjustment to last year because everybody was feeling pain at that time, and that was the Selectmen uh stipend account. The Selectmen stipend account had um a, a few years ago been raised to two thousand dollars a year. Uh, that was reduced back to where it was before. Um, this year, um after speaking with the um chairman, I do believe we have um very good confidence in our numbers. And I believe that um as a matter of fairness, since all departments had had um some large measure of restoration of uh reductions um in the previous year, the Selectmen's account should have that happen too, um particularly because it has been a very active year. So in order to do that, um, this is a one-time uh increase that I have proposed and the um chairman has uh supported here uh in the budget, and that is uh for that stipend to go up uh one thousand dollars, which will adjust the accounting of what they should have gotten last year. And then next year, we'll go back to their regular uh stipend le- levels. Um, again, yeah, I think it's a matter of fairness and um I know that um it's an important thing that we all look at for every department and we've reviewed that um for the Selectmen budget as well. But again, the bottom line actually is less than what it was last year. So the town manager budget um goes up very nominally, a little over two percent. There's no significant changes. Uh, we still don't have um as many staff as we had pre um COVID. Um, I still don't feel quite as comfortable in being able to figure out how we're gonna arrange that as we go forward uh with uh coming out of this pandemic. But um staff steps is basically the increases that you see there for the administrative support staff. The Finance Committee, there's no significant changes um to that. Their uh reserve is going to be set once again at uh a hundred thousand dollars, but the uh normal expenditures for the Finance Committee remain pretty much level. Uh, the Assessors' Office um is another area, um which last year we had made adjustments to the positions um for uh assessor clerks to becoming assistant assessors. So this year is just a matter of the staff steps. And the only major change after making a monumental leap into uh changing our software for property assessors and assessments um was to upgrade our assessors' maps this year. Uh, the Treasure Collector is basically again staff steps. Um, we did reduce tax title attorney fees. What you'll see is that, not last year, but the previous year, we had actually about thirty-one thousand dollars that was put into um trying to collect overdue taxes. Um, by changing our, our tax title attorney, what we have been able to gain is a um, you only get paid by the taxes you collect versus we're paying an attorney to go through all of these steps, whether we can collect the taxes or not, we're paying for that. So we actually have a reduced uh amount of tax title attorney fees that we're paying. And so the amount, even though it is um an increase from last year, it's still less than what we did two years ago. And that's because we have a much more effective legal uh representation for us. And I know our collector uh treasure is very pleased uh with the, with the change that I advocated um with, with her consent, and uh we're very happy, and that's why we're moving forward, even with the land auction. Accounting, um, there has been some, again, um increases relative to staff steps, but there was also elimination position of a part-time senior accountant. Um, at this time, we felt we could do uh without that, and IT also uh falls under the Finance Division. Um, I just wanna point out that um through uh reorganization and management changes in fiscal nineteen, uh we continue to remain um under a hundred and eight thousand uh from previous budgets, and that doesn't include um benefits that may have been for uh full-time positions. Uh, we've reduced our actual expenditures for copiers this year. Uh, and that was a major move, uh and it's a substantial savings for us. And we are um also providing for some routine software upgrades. So legal services, there's really no significant changes. Uh, we believe that um the amount that we have it uh provided for in the budget has adequately represented the community. Uh, and you just never know when you're gonna have a large legal case. Uh, we have had our share of legal representation that has been necessary um on behalf of the town by our uh legal law firm, uh particularly in the face of uh COVID and enforcement challenges. So um I feel comfortable with um leaving that at where it is, and I do think it's important that we maintain that. Um, personnel, HR, that is perhaps one of the areas that has the biggest change um in terms of an increase. Uh, we have recognized since bringing on a human resource specialist and as we trying to reconcile um between the schools and the town that we really need a payroll and benefits coordinator so that our HR specialists can do much more training, uh much more of HR functions that we're not actually being able to provide uh from uh retention, recruitment, and um being able to make sure we remain um certified and that we take advantage of things that are helpful to improving the climate um in our workforce and providing training to our department heads who are new to their kinds of positions um and, and can use and benefit uh from wise counsel, from uh human resource specialists. The problem is, is there's just too much work uh to be done, particularly in the area of payroll and benefits. I will tell you that I've had ongoing conversations with the superintendent that we may um in fact take over the benefits aspect um for being able to take on all new employees, but as something where we're gonna continue to figure out um and outline as we put this new position in place. The Town Clerk's Office, um, we have um savings in the overall salary account uh for, for a retirement that had occurred um and the installation of a new uh interim clerk. We also have had decreased election costs um this year. So um our, that whole entire budget has gone down, and it's mainly because we don't have, you know, an, an unprecedented uh presidential election, um and we just really have one election that will be um coming on due. So overall mailing costs and personnel and details, all of that has been reduced. Um, and we've reviewed that with that department. Um, land management, land management is in the area that we're continuing to restructure. Um, as you know, we brought on our first uh Economic and Planning Development Director this year. Uh, that position had been vacated um since about two thousand and seven uh to two thousand and ten. That person is Tony Sousa. He's now uh working to um provide us with that professional expertise to support the planning board and to support the business development that um is very necessary in this community. Having said that, um, as you know, we did not have the planner in place, and we did not have a director for public health in place. And we really had administrative assistant roles, actually trying to manage all functions uh professional administratively in those offices. So we are at the point where now that we've brought the professionals on board, we're actually um eliminating some administrative assistant positions that were mainly because the workload was so incredible. Um, and not having the professional uh expertise to be able to carry out some of that work made it uh much more onerous. And so we're able to eliminate, at least for now, an administrative assistant position because we brought on professionals. Um, you know, in the management role, and we're also realigning some of our inspectional services. Memorial Hall is an area where we increased hours for our floating clerk. Um, as you know, we created a customer service window uh that continues to be readily used by the public. Uh, but we don't see that going away um right away. A matter of fact, it may be something we integrate um going forward in the future um in addition to eventually opening up our town hall. So we're increasing the, the hours for our floating clerk so that that can support not only that function, but some other departmental functions, um particularly when we come through tax season. Um, the Treasure Collector's Office gets very busy, um so does our um Assessor's Office. And this uh position supports those in a variety of different ways. Um, police department or law enforcement, uh once again, we have a solid commitment to our police of the basic increases to this um overall budget is contractual. Uh, and we are in the final phases of negotiating this year. Um, and uh we're getting close to solidifying that particular contract. And again, it calls for what I consider to be kind of nominal um increases because there had been quite a bit of market rate adjustments done to the police um division uh in their last contract. Uh, this budget does call for replacement of cruises within the operating uh budget, and this is to keep us on a cycle uh for a regular operational need and not put it out in the context that, you know, it's something that um only happens once every ten years. Um, it is important to keep on a cycle of replacing our cruises because of the amount of mileage and the amount of wear and tear the, the um department vehicles get. The um Emergency Management Services and Fire Department, there is a departmental reorganization um that is occurring. Um, there are contractual increases because we did uh negotiate another um fire uh fighter union contract uh successfully this year. Uh, this also, this budget calls for um at least uh paramedics uh training uh for two members, and it restores administrative assistant hours that were cut during uh COVID. Um, the EOC, there's really no major changes. There has been an advocacy coming from uh the police chief about uh food reimbursable in an alternative manner um basically through MEMA, and so that was a small consideration for the removal of that per the request of the department head. Um, animal control, it's basically staff steps again. What I mean by that, it's not the staff is stepping, it's their incremental increases that they, um, we have them on for a schedule each and every year. Um, that is not necessarily cola, this is a normal after successful um review and evaluation that they would get um in terms of their staff step increase. Public Works, as I had said before, it is a very large division, encompasses seven areas from everything from facilities to parks and recreation, highway operations, um and conservation and a whole number of other things. Um, what we have here is some reduced um director salary uh by our new director who is coming in um just this past uh November, so we have some savings that are there. Uh, we've also budgeted for lease payments for our highway equipment um this year as we had started um to look at providing that um in last year's uh capital um equipment requests. Um, so now we're going to try to budget that on a regular basis for the lease payments. Um, there has been a request that the Carbuncle Pond um is in great need of an aeration system. The Board of Selectmen had been uh provided a report that showed cyanobacteria counts as being extremely high. Uh, one of the recommendations from the conservation agent, well, and the DPW director is to install a continuous aeration system to make a continuous aeration system to make water quality improvements. Of course, this is fundamentally very important to our recreation program and for the public health, safety and well-being because Carbuncle Pond is a recreation destination along with our beautiful Carbuncle Beach House that's there, that we're all looking forward to being able to use in a normal way as we get through this pandemic. Staff steps are included in the Public Works budget. As you know, last year we made a huge leap in terms of creating an overall staff compensation plan for DPW that had not actually ever been endeavored since the nineteen seventies. And I know that that is working well and we're budgeting for those normal increases that now part of that compensation plan. We've increased custodial staff hours and clerk hours. Both of those things have happened because of our ability now to have to address COVID. And we're looking forward to being able to restore administrative assistant position hours as well to pre-COVID status. All of those areas are still needed as we come out of the pandemic and more so for custodial staff as we eventually venture into terrain where we're going to need to keep our buildings clean, particularly as we come out in the beginning phases of restoring some of our operational hours to our buildings. Increased electricity matched actual, so our Public Works, you'll see there's a change in that electricity account because we need to be able to match it to what's actually happening. There's increased supplies and materials to match what's actually been being expended. That's what we do. We look back and say, where are they at? And then we try to fit the budget request to that need. And then obviously the DPW is responsible for putting out bids and developing contracts and reviews, even though they come also to my attention. But it's also in the best interest of that department to have some professional MCPPO training, which I have been through this last year. And we're going to provide for that so that we can have the best procurement and contracting practices within an area that actually addresses millions of dollars of infrastructure through contracting and bidding. Human Services, even though it's a small area of the budget, is extremely important. As you know, our Council on Aging has really been through the ring of this past year with COVID. We have obviously had a retirement and Laura Wilson was a person who came in as our assistant director and has done incredible work in that area. And we have now, last year, actually put as part of a leveraged senior formula assistance grant, we leveraged the money there to create the position of culinary supervisor or chef. The town had not had a regular meal program that was actually hosted and developed by an actual designated position in our senior center. We have been doing that to tremendous accolades from our seniors in the community. And that position remains budgeted this year with hopes of expanding and perhaps even sending our chef to some other wonderful culinary opportunities because what she's doing is just fabulous and everyone is really excited about that. That's really the major change there. There are some increases in hours that we're providing for senior transportation, but that also gets offset by the Worcester Regional Transportation Authority. But we are improving and increasing our hours for senior transportation, particularly as we come out of the pandemic. We know our seniors are going to be wanting and eager to use more ridership opportunities. And of course, as we've been doing our vaccination clinics and vaccinating over three hundred seniors, we've been doing double duty with our transportation vans to get them to the clinic that was slated just for our seniors. Veteran Services is always an important and statutorily required area of our budget. There is an increase in the hours, you can see in the budget, for our veterans agent. We do belong to a Veterans Service District and we have a Veterans Service Director that's out of Southbridge that we share with three other communities. And we pay eight thousand dollars because we need to be part of that district or we would need to have a full-time veterans agent in absence of that. And we just wanted to provide more hours. We have a change in our veterans agent status recently. And so we want to make sure that they have enough ability to interact and interface with our veterans on a one-to-one basis. We do have a slight increase coming for our benefits for the eligible veterans in our community. And so we base that figure on that. We've also had some increased supplies and outreach funding that I'm providing because I recognize how important it is to do even a much better job at making sure veterans know that they are entitled to benefits and that they know how to access those. The Library is another area for culture and recreation that had actually gone through quite a bit of difficult and challenging year. We've had to restructure staff positions in the face of COVID. We eliminated positions. And the library director has come up with some very creative ways of sharing with the finance committee and with the Massachusetts Library Board of Commissioners on the need for a new position of catalog and technology librarian. Obviously, we're going to be looking at an increase in this library account, but nothing more than what they had prior to the COVID pandemic. So we're restoring some of the pages with this new position will act not only as a librarian, but also work in the area, areas that used to be held by just clerks, not a technology librarian. This position is being strongly advocated by our library director because of the fact that people's notions of how to use the library have changed dramatically and they do see a particular need for this and for cataloging to make the library continued in a direction that meets the needs of the public. So the community center likewise had received a reduction. Both of these buildings were not open and some remain not open to this day, but they are working towards plans to reopen. Our community center has had very strict guidelines, more so than other municipal areas, to be able to operate. But this budget is calling for restoration of the lifeguard accounts. It's also looking at supplementing the budget with trust fund grants that we are hoping they will be applying for and putting forward a brand new set of programs and activities for our youth that will also obviously be tailored as we come out of the pandemic. But that will be a way to increase the operational side of the budget and hopefully offset some of those requirements that we're looking to have occur. There's also been reduced fuel and electric costs since we replaced that very expensive boiler that was from the nineteen thirties and forties in the school, former school. And that is actually yielding pretty significant savings, both for our utility costs there. So having said that, you know, we're, we're going to be watching the, the areas of culture and recreation and making adjustments as we can, depending on what changes happen to the budget. Education is a major area of the budget, obviously. And I had mentioned earlier that we were looking to increase the school budget by six hundred and nine thousand dollars over last year, which is about a three point five percent increase. When I spoke with the superintendent early on, they were asking for slightly higher with the hopes that they could put reading specialist, potential director of curriculum, instituting language back in certain grades in STEM program. Those were all very important. And with this particular increase, I, I do believe they'll be able to do the majority of that. But there is also potential federal money that is coming through the pipeline as well as state money. And that may also help, particularly as the schools go back live in in-person learning versus a hybrid model. Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical Education is another very important aspect of our educational budget. We belong to a regional cohort that supports this type of education. Because of that, it's not as big of a budget, but we're looking to fund that at about one point five million, which is an increase of about five point five percent. The next item is looking at employee benefits. There is, I told you earlier, it's the, the second largest area, but it's necessary if we're going to provide our employees with, with the benefits that help retain them here in town. So overall, there's about a three point seven five percent increase, believe it or not, that's nominal compared to other communities. There are reasons why we're able to keep that, you know, in a manner that I think is very positive for us to be able to sort of hold the line with costs related to our health insurance and our retirement and the like. There is an increase in retirement costs of two hundred and ninety-two thousand. We do have an unfunded retirement liability payment that we're making every year and we don't have a choice in that. That's for all of our pensioners that have been put into that retirement system. That's the Worcester County Retirement System. And, you know, we'll be happy when we get fully funded because that payment is like one point six million out of the over two point five million that we pay for retirement costs. It's actually more than what we pay for our normal retirement costs. So that is something that we continue to have to actually put together in our budgets. Unemployment Insurance, we've reduced by about fifteen thousand, obviously. We had much higher unemployment insurance costs associated with reductions in staff due to COVID. Now some of that with the restoration of staff obviously are going down. We've also reduced IOD costs. I know in my budget message, I go into detail about that. The provider for us for our insurance coverage for injured on duty or workers' compensation along with our overall ability to provide a climate where we reduce risk and not only to our people who work, but also our buildings. Our overall costs have been so significantly reduced, more than sixty-four percent for workers' comp, more than fifty percent in a couple of the key areas and a hundred percent in a couple of key areas. That has allowed us to negotiate with our insurance provider for a guaranteed rate of no increase. That's huge when you're looking at overall costs. Now, that means we're able to negate any potential health insurance cost increases to a budget neutral position. So we are expecting a slight increase in that area for overall costs. We did do a plan restructuring, we got rid of Tufts, we have the Fallon Plan. But Fallon still hasn't actually solidified that percentage with us. They've given us a range, but despite the range, even at the highest level, it will be budget neutral for us. And that's because we have savings that we have been able to maximize in this area. And again, the general insurance budget for premium student negotiation is also not seeing any increase. That occurred through a lot of, I call brass knuckle negotiations. We've been able to sustain that and get great and excellent insurance coverage, but at a reduced cost. And that continues to this day for all of our general personal and professional liability insurance coverage and property insurance coverage. The next area is a newer area in our budget. As you know, the Department of Revenue had us alter the way that we paid for PEG access funding of services. And we now have a media specialist that works as an employee. This is an area that is not funded through taxation. And the only increase in this budget is basically for capital one-time purchases for equipment. And, and it's much more nominal than what we formerly were paying on an annual basis. The next item is just to talk about our capital program because that's one of the areas that I am also supposed to touch upon. As you know, those free cash numbers, the grants and the ability to leverage additional resources, we're looking at an overall capital spending plan of over three million dollars. That we are actually taking one point seven million of the free cash we generated and that is going to go to a number of projects, which I'm going to get into. As you can see, the free cash number itself comprises fifty-five percent of the capital program funding strategy. We are also looking to provide five hundred thousand dollars, which is coming, what we call from the levy. So that is part of our operational budget that's going to our roads and bridges. This is an additional to the half a million dollars that I told you earlier is not enough for us to maintain a level of improvement for our roads and bridges. That is what we get from the state and we're matching it once again, which is really very atypical. And until we can get the community to understand that we will eventually need to do a more comprehensive borrowing arrangement for really improving all of our roads at once, we are talking, the DPW director and I, of a potential future revision of what we've already proposed that passed at town meeting last year, but did not pass at the ballot box. And I think if we can get numbers down and show the public that we can do, you know, a lot of work with less, then, then eventually we can free up this five hundred thousand, which is very atypical. That five hundred thousand could be used in a lot of other ways in an operational budget. But having said that, that represents about sixteen percent of our capital program. We're also anticipating about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is going to be coming from grants and trusts to actually support some of the areas that are important, particularly with capital improvements for energy reduction and efficiency. And there is also a measure in this capital program with our fire EMS for a borrowing proposal for a piece of fire apparatus. And that would represent about twenty-two percent of our overall funding strategy for capital. Moving to the capital program trends, I wanted to show you just how effective we have been financially in being able to fund our capital needs. If you look at where we were at several years ago to where we are now, we're talking about in, you know, fiscal year seventeen, we were at about a steady million. And then as you see, starting in fiscal year eighteen, going all the way up to where we are for the current proposals, we have more than doubled the amount of capital funding we are providing. And that is helping us reduce an incredibly long backlog of overdue maintenance and not just repairs, but major capital projects that have been long on the docket. And we're doing that through a five-year capital plan. We can't necessarily meet every project in a given fiscal year. And what we do with the departments and also with the finance committee is really weigh those in what ones we might be able to accomplish by leveraging funds from other areas, whether they're a grant or whether they're borrowing or whether they are through free cash. I wanted to provide you, this is also another new slide that looks at funding trends. If you look back to where we were in fiscal year seventeen, you can see that there was a lot of borrowing here and money coming from operational side to pay for capital program needs. Remember, I told you that that should be flipped. It's not the way you should do capital programming. And since becoming town manager, that has actually changed significantly. If you look at the overall amount from borrowing, it has been reduced in the amount, oops, sorry. And the amount in, of free cash has gone up. I don't know if it's going to allow me, right there we are. So this light area you can see is the levy, but the, the teal area is showing you what we're being able to fund with one-time monies. And obviously we've increased the amount that we're getting also from grants. So that just shows you that we've changed up the diversity of how we approach our capital program, plan. And then of course, I want to just highlight some of the areas that we are going to be addressing through our building improvement fund, which has been set up to, to address areas where we know we can fund the overall improvement fund with free cash and then make determinations about what capital items will be in there. The building improvement fund with free cash will have five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that will be appropriated to address the North Station roof replacement, the library carpet replacement. We're making ADA upgrades to the senior center, the town hall. We're doing smoke detector system replacements, air handlers and replacements. We're also looking at a major foundation repair for the Chaffey and Barton Schools and also middle school boiler replacement and also electronic security door access. That gets all contained by being funded through free cash. And of course, it has a diversity from buildings in different divisions. And that's what we try to strive to have some equity across different areas. and that's what we try to strive to have some equity across different areas. Going on further, aside from the Building Improvement Fund, we are also doing direct free cash to a number of projects. The Leicester Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project is a behemoth task. It is also very, very necessary, and the state has put it on a very significant watch list for being in need of repairs. There were some minor adjustments that were made because the town didn't have the money five years ago. Today, I'm happy to say that we are recommending five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards this project, which is extremely significant. That's in addition to five hundred thousand in roadway improvements. I mean, we're talking about some very important numbers here, folks, that will get jobs done, that are long overdue, that also show our commitment to wanting to address public safety issues. In this free cash capital investment line of projects, we have a facilities van. We have an actual parking lot filling of all the cracks, which is a very, not just tedious job, but necessary job to get longevity out of our asphalt across our schools for every parking lot. We're looking at zero-turn lawn mowers. As you know, our parks and our cemeteries are kept in immaculate order. And just like cruises, we have to replace equipment that allows us to actually keep those areas in tip-top shape. There's also a recommendation, and we are calling for it in the capital plan, for car three in the fire EMS division. That is really actually a pickup truck that functions in our EMS roles as well as provides plowing and the like at the actual facility when it's not being used in terms of the fire headquarters. Dispatch consoles. As you know, we have brought before the Board of Selectment some recent concerns about the antiquatedness of our dispatch consoles and the inability to get parts for repairs. Our police chief and lieutenant have strongly advocated for the replacement of those consoles after being evaluated as part of our communications reviews and police technology upgrades. Those aren't significant, insignificant amounts of money. We're talking somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for not one, but two consoles because they have to be able to speak to one another. And anybody that listens to our scanners knows how busy our law enforcement and fire departments are and how dependent we are on those consoles. There are also some additional police technology upgrades that are being requested and being funded at about thirty-five thousand dollars. The town hall inspection vehicle, last year, we had moved to replace one vehicle with the notion that our building and commissioners would be using a vehicle, and we also have assessors and other people going out into the field, Board of Health, that would be using the other. So we are now going to be able to finally have vehicles that we can provide people to do inspectional work on behalf of the town, which is significant accomplishment. We're also embarking on a town hall document scanning and destruction endeavor. As you know, we are required by law to keep a lot of documents, but we are also not necessarily required by law to have them all in paper form. The area that we're going to make this huge step is in the area of the Office of Land Management, which is just surrounded by actual filing cabinets. And so that will be a big endeavor, and it's not a cheap endeavor, but we are planning to begin that so that everything in the future, as much as possible, can be online. We're also looking to replace, and this is being also leveraged by funding from COVID reimbursement for having a actual wireless digital communications board. It's been very frustrating when we have emergency notices that need to be put out that, you know, in the middle of the wintertime or related to COVID or anything, that we only have the ability to have a person go out, whether they're in the driving rain or snow, to put up our little letters on the marquee outside. So this will give us the ability to actually be more engaging to the community and to do it in much more real time. And it's also a public safety issue that we've needed to upgrade for a long time. Also, we have the PEG playback system, which I mentioned, that is also being supported in the capital project area. Capital investing. I told you that there may be an item that would be looking for borrowing, and that is a six hundred and eighty-five thousand borrowing request for Engine One rescue replacement. This, you know, is something that is part of the ongoing evaluation by the department for its needs, and it has been being strongly advocated for. We may have some different abilities to not necessarily have to borrow for this, but I don't know that for certain until I look at how the federal monies that are coming out of this latest presidential authorization will be being allowed to use. And so we might have the ability not to borrow necessarily as much, but at the same time, it's an important need, and we need to actually try to adhere to our five-year plan to try to bring it to fruition. I already mentioned the roads that we're actually contributing to as part of our capital plan. And we are also going to repurpose some available funds to create some irrigation at rural field and to finally actually pave the carbuncle parking lot in its entirety and not to do it in a piecemeal fashion. And then, finally, over two hundred and twenty thousand in green communities funding. We are going to have to probably match about forty thousand, but the rest of it will be picked up by the state, and that will be part of our ongoing effort to bring energy efficiency. This year, we're going to be targeting two of the schools for fifty percent improvements in the LED lighting or putting in those fixtures, as well as weatherization, and the state will cover the majority of that. And they've already, we've already done that in the senior center, the library, and the fire stations. And just to give you an idea of why this is important, it's important from a capital standpoint, but each year, the savings that we are realizing last year was about thirty-two thousand dollars for annualized savings with the improvements we made with converting to LED lights in the buildings. With the schools, it will be as much as thirty-four thousand, and obviously, that is an annualized thing. So it's all good because then we turn around and we're able to use the money in a different way. And that is the thirty-five thousand viewpoint, with maybe coming down to fifteen thousand feet for the budget presentation. Obviously, I want to say once again, thank you to the Finance Committee. Thank you to all the boards that also present to be included for their respective financial requests. And obviously, thank you to the Board of Selectmen as well. And like I said, I'm very excited about going into this fiscal year, hopefully with a brightening horizon of not-so-pandemic-oriented financial forecast, but also because we have some excellent trends that we're able to continue the town on the right pathway. And I just want to close by saying, in addition to all of this good work, and I explained that we had leveraged a twenty thousand dollar grant to develop our first cogent Financial Management Operations Procedures Manual. We are also, with another twenty thousand dollar grant, going to be submitting the town's first Government Finance Administrative Officers' Budget Document Review. It is a comprehensive document that will come after town meeting because it has to have the elements that have been voted by town meeting. It will be a document that will be evaluated by some of the nation's top financial experts so that they can evaluate not only how we put our budget together, but the way that we put the budget together and the priorities that we set and the management principles that we use behind that. I'm hoping that we will get a strong review, but once again, it shows us that we're moving in a direction where we want to be able to reach those benchmarks. And it takes time, I recognize that. I think we've done an excellent job in a short period of time under very challenging circumstances this year, and also bringing us into a financial realm where we can actually look forward to things in a planned way. And once again, I want to thank Katie McKenna for working with me, and I appreciate the floor to be able to present the budget as anticipated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Manager. John, do you have anything to add? Or is that...
Well, I'm all set. I think we're pretty much all set. I would welcome the community to listen in our meetings. We get into the minutia of things. Town Manager's done an excellent job looking at it from a ten-thousand-foot level and going into some of the detail. But we do interact with all the department heads to understand what they're doing with our money and how it's going to be spent going forward. It's all about people, not paper clips. So I would welcome the community to listen into our meetings as we get into the details of each department's budget.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Roger, and thank you for coming this evening. Board members, any comments before we move on?
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
First, I just wanted to say, Madam Manager, that was a great presentation. You don't, definitely don't disappoint when you present the budget. It was very straightforward, and I appreciate that. I have attended all of the Finance Committee budget meetings as well to help me gain a better understanding of the budget for this year. So those meetings have been helpful. So I thank the Finance Committee for welcoming me into those meetings as an observer as well. I just wanted to say, I do have a few questions about the budget, but out of respect for the time and the fact that we still have our whole meeting left, I really don't want to necessarily get into all of them now. Just didn't know if it would be possible at some point over the next week to meet with you, Jen, to maybe just get a couple clarity items on a few of the budget items. Nothing big, nothing necessarily major, but just to better understand a few of the items, if that would be all right.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. So I don't have anything else, then. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, John Sad here.
Yes, John.
Yeah, I would just like to commend the manager and the entire finance group, including our Finance Director and our Finance Committee. I think these people put in one hundred percent all the time, and this was a tough year, this year, this go-around. I was very impressed with the presentation. During this COVID, I really haven't been able to get out and go very far. So I've had the opportunity to tune in to quite a few of the Finance Committee meetings. And I have to tell you that I'm very impressed with the dedication that these people put into working out the town's budget because the bottom line is, if you do it and you do it right, everybody is happy. And I'll tell you, I really am impressed with this year's presentation. Jen, I thought you did an outstanding job with your presentation, the way you put it together. I didn't think it was ever going to end. But it was well worth the wait, believe me. Job well done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Very good. Very true. Excuse me. Anyone else on the board? Have any... Very good. John, you say it all. You're right there. These people do, year after year, tremendous amount of work. I don't think townspeople can even realize how much you do. So, you know, as a board member, as a town resident, I just thank you. Thank you all for showing up too. So, thank you. Have a good evening, and we'll move on with our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the Civil Fingerprint Bylaw Acceptance. I believe we've all had a...
Yes.
Do you want to say anything, Jen?
Oh, yeah. I did think that the chief was going to be on. He might have taken a coffee break during the Finance Committee budget presentation. I would say that, I know that the board has been informed in the past about how we were hoping that when we passed the Civil Printing Bylaw of acceptance, that we talked about being able to do particular checks on specific types of, you know, applicants in town. And basically, there is the next steps we had been waiting for the Federal Bureau of Investigation to actually come back with approving or sort of giving us a positive nod to the actual bylaw. And so I think at this point in time, you know, we were looking to actually codify the bylaw as it was reviewed by the Attorney General and reviewed by the FBI in the way that that actually should be put together. And so I think the chief at this point wanted to accept that as it was presented. I can't speak completely for him. I do know that there were some, you know, issues that he was looking at specifically, but, you know, he asked to have this put on as a matter of, I think, routine acceptance. It's taken some time, I think, because of COVID, for them to get notified back. And I know we had sent over information prior to this meeting in advance about the fact that the actual approval had taken place for this to go forward. Of course, there's one area that the chief, we had talked about, and that was related to, not bodywork practitioners, but massage parlors in particular. And, you know, there is a little bit of a disappointment in the sense that the state licenses those type of practitioners. And so our bylaw doesn't necessarily apply to that type of work in licensed profession. But I did tell the chief, I said, you know, I think that we were on our road to understanding how important this was and that we could, in the future, perhaps garner some leadership at the state level to actually have more of this. I was just handed a note that I'm not convinced that the chief knew about this tonight from the Board of Selectmen's office.
He's asking that it be put on the next agenda.
And he would like it to be put on the next agenda. So if we can do that, I think he'll come and really explain it. I tried my best based on the conversations I had with him. So there you go, Mr. Chair. The chief has sent word that if we can postpone it to the next meeting, that would be A-OK with him.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to continue this till our next meeting.
Make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment? Or call for a vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. We will take this up at our next meeting. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Little League Parade Request. Pretty straightforward. Phil Davis is asking for the Little League to have a parade on April eighteenth from twelve to one. The parade will start at the American Legion and end at the Community Center, which is the normal route. And unless the board has any concern, I'd entertain a motion to approve this condition on they meet the requirements of the Board of Health and the Health Director.
Make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Or call for a vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll say yes. That's five in the affirmative. They are welcome to have their parade. It'll be great to see the kids enjoying themselves. Okay. Next item on our agenda is Donation Acceptance. Okay, next item on our agenda is a Donation Acceptance. Okay, we have a $100 donation is being offered to the Oxford Senior Center from Carol White. And with an accordance of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. If she's going to make that that donation, we have, we we must vote for accept it. So I'll make a motion to accept that donation.
Make a motion that the board accept the $100 donation to the Oxford Senior Center from Carol White in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Second.
Great. Any comments? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in the affirmative. We thank her very much for that donation. Next item on our agenda is the Appointment of Todd D. Hammond to the Registrar of Voters. Jen, you want to give us a little?
Sure, but it's just you have in your packets a request that is coming from Michelle Jenkins in the Clerk's Office. They have a vacancy and they need a Republican Representative to the Board of Registars. And Mr. Hammond has offered to do that. And so she's requesting that that appointment take place, obviously, before we get too far along into election season.
All right, then I'd entertain a motion to approve that request.
Make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Then I call for a vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in the affirmative, one no. But he is appointed to be to be a registrar for the remainder of Robert Shedd's term. Very good. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is a Policy Selectment Policy Review on the License for Egg Playing Chickens and Ducks. Is is this through the committee or is this through you, Jen?
So this is a result of, the board had already met and adopted that they would do a license, you know, policy. I guess there was questions from that meeting. We do have an applicant looking to actually get a license. And there was a question on how much, because it wasn't clear to the Board of Selectmen and Administrative Assistant at that time, whether the cost for the license was differing from the annual cost. And I know that there was also that issue, I think, that was raised by Selectmen SAD. So I think that we should just get clarity on whether the fee for actual application was initially a $50 fee, but the license renewal fee was $40. And there was discussion on whether those two amounts were in keeping with what the board had decided. This was was done in the fall, and this is our first license. So I think it kind of got shelved and maybe not validated or clarified before.
All right. Board members, comments, concerns?
Yes.
Yes, John.
Yeah, I feel that, and this is this is my personal opinion, I feel that there should be an initial fee for the permit. Once that initial fee is paid, then there should be an annual renewal fee. Similar to dog licenses, cat licenses, every year they come in and pay their $10 dollars or whatever it is for a dog license or a cat license. It should be the same thing for this this situation as well. Only difference being the initial permit is a one-time deal, which is renewable. Now, I I would think that the the amount in question is what we should be deciding here this evening. My initial recommendation would be $40 for the initial permit. And that would cover the cost of the inspection of the Animal Control Officer going out, making sure that the area is conducive to to having these these animals. And then every year thereafter, there's a renewal fee, which should be less. My recommendation would be $20. I just throw that out to the board as a base here. Whatever the board wants to do, let's do it and get it done with because I'm sure spring coming, we're going to be getting some people who are going to be interested in getting a permit.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the board, John. Sounds good with the $40 initial. The the $20, the only question I would have is that because the Animal Control Officer has to go out and do inspections every year. Would the $20 cover it? You know, would like 25 be a better figure? I don't want to do too much, you know? I mean, a dog and, you know.
Yeah.
They don't have to do nothing there, but we're here. Our officer actually has to take time. We're paying them to go and inspect. I don't know. You think 20 bucks is would cover that?
Personally, I do, only because the the initial setup is is what's going to take some time. The renewal is just going and make sure that nothing has changed. The inspection on the renewal is just, nothing has changed. Okay, 20 bucks.
Yeah.
I don't know. Whatever the board feels.
Right. Other board members?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I, back when we had originally had the discussion, I think that I had initially suggested that we do a $50 initial fee. And then I think my recommendation had been a $20 renewal. So I I don't really have any issue with what John's recommending. And honestly, I think I would be fine with the $40 fee because I'm looking with the way the policy is laid out, it looks like there's an additional $10 cost for the Certified List of Abutters, which I don't think is unreasonable. But that with the $40 fee would bring it to $50 total for that initial application. Which for the work that the Animal Control Officer would have to do, I don't think is unreasonable. So I I would kind of be on par with John about saying that initial fee of 40 with a renewal of 20.
All right. Any other board members? All right, then I'd entertain a motion to set the fees that initially would be $40 for the initial and $20 for renewal. And of course, the $10 initial certified list when they go for the license.
I would make that motion.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one abstention. Then we have set those fees. Very good. Thank you, board members. All right, we go to the next one is a the Selectment Policy on Monday, Meetings After a Monday Holiday. What would the board like to do with this? Right now, we we don't meet after a Monday holiday. We are meeting on a on a Wednesday. What would the board, would we like to continue that? Or what would you like?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I think the thought process of this was that when we were flipping through the policies for the ones that need to be reviewed and updated, we came across this one that says that we don't meet the Tuesday after a Monday holiday. And personally, I don't see a reason why we couldn't meet on the Tuesday after a Monday holiday. Most businesses are open the Tuesday after. It's from, to the best of my knowledge, considered a normal business day. So I don't see a reason why we would necessarily need to continue that policy. We have it stated on our website that we meet on Tuesdays. Residents know that we typically meet every other Tuesday. So I think it kind of throws residents off when we meet on Wednesdays. So personally, I would suggest that we eliminate that and just meet on Tuesdays.
Okay. Any other board members' comments? All right, well, I I am going to disagree. I think you know, the original intent was that people, let's say, are on the Monday holiday, they run away. Or they've been on vacation, coming back, as has happened in this board on several occasions where even board members haven't had time to review their packet and be all, you know, up to date on what is going to happen in the meeting. That extra day kind of gives you that little bit of leeway. So I that I think that was the original intent of the reason for having that. So but again, it's up to the board. So any other comments from any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, I as, thanks. So I think that this was on the last meeting, on last board selectmen's meeting, and we wanted to push it forward to this meeting so we could get the feedback from, because I think Selectman Daniels, no, I think he was there, but I think Selectmen's ad wasn't there. So, you know, we, I guess we, you know, from the from the Policy Committee, you know, we do recognize the pros and cons of each one. I think this year is a little bit challenging because we have an awful lot of meetings on Wednesdays as opposed to Tuesdays. So we really wanted to get the feel for what the board thought in regards to that. I can tell you just on a personal, just myself, not stepping outside of that Policy Committee. I don't I don't like, personally, I don't like the Wednesday meeting. It's Tuesdays, it's always Tuesdays. And that and that makes it easy for me. And, you know, if I'm away, I got to get on my email and I got to get my stuff. So, I mean, that's just me personally, but it's a board decision. It's not just, you know, our decision. And that's why we threw it up there for discussion.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Not hearing none, then I would entertain a motion on this policy.
I would make a motion that we eliminate the policy for not meeting the Tuesday after a Monday holiday. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more comments? Not hearing any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. And I'll vote no. So that's four in the affirmative, one negative. We will now have all our meetings on Tuesdays, no matter what happens. Very good. That brings us to our Town Manager's Report. And I'll turn it over to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As if you guys haven't heard enough from me tonight. So I'll try to get through this Manager's Report quickly. I didn't think it was going to be long. And then we looked at it and said, we have a lot of things just to share with the board. Tonight, we have Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month, which is the first item on the agenda. March is considered that particular awareness month. MS, as you know, affects 2.5 million people worldwide, and there's no definitive cure for the disease. I was approached by Kelly Twombly of Mom Squad. I wanted to allow her to let the board know. And I think she was, oh, there she is. Yes, she's on there. I think she's looking to ask the board if they would be willing to make that declaration. So if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be good to hear from those requesting to make the declaration by the whole board. Thank you.
All right. What would the board like to do?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, would it be all right if Ms. Twombly got to speak about Mom Squad? MS, she is on the line.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I know.
Thank you.
I know. I know it's an issue that's very close to the entire family. So go ahead, Kelly. Can you unmute yourself and give us an idea about why you think this is important to to have the town do? Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. Yeah, we are, we started Mom Squad about six years ago. A lot of you know that my mom was diagnosed in 2003, and she's been fighting the battle ever since. And March is actually MS Awareness Month. They nationally, we, that's, you know, we celebrate it, well, not celebrate it, but recognize it during the month of March. And so I, we just came to you to to kind of, we like to get the awareness out there. We do an event every year, six years. And last year, we actually raised the most money we ever raised. We raised over $13,000. I think total, we've raised almost $60,000 in the six years that we've done it, which has been amazing. And and this helps with, you know, lots of different things, as research and all of that type of stuff. But it's really an important thing to get out there because there are a lot of people in our community with MS and you don't even know it. Some people have it, you know, my mom is is in a wheelchair. But there are some people that are walking around with it and you don't even know it, but they're suffering inside every day. So we like to try to get as much awareness out there as we can. And we're just doing our part to try to raise some money to hopefully, you know, find a cure someday. And and we really appreciate you guys listening to us tonight. And it it means a lot to me. It's my mom. And, you know, it also affects my my cousin and along with my mom's aunt. So there's three of us in our family that have it. And so it's pretty, pretty near and dear to us. And, you know, we were just trying to do everything we can. So we nationally recognize it. And when we're coming in front of you to just, you know, in in hopes that we can just make awareness, you know, get out there more and and really help the people in the community with disabilities like MS. And so we thank you very much. And if people want to learn more about what we do, they can visit our website. We have a website under Momsquad.org, right? Is it .org? Yes. And and they can check out what we do and see the events. And we do walks every year. So there's a lot of fun stuff that we do. And we're just trying to make a difference. So so thank you for listening to us tonight. And thanks for letting us be part of your meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. So we do have a proclamation in our packet, but it's up to the board. What would the board like to do?
I would make a motion to deem March Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month in the town of Oxford.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? I call for a vote.
Yes.
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 John? Is he still there? All right, I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative. I don't know. Oh, there we go. We got John. That's five in the affirmative. Thank you. So thank you very much, board members. That is approved.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a great night.
All right, Jen, back to you.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to give the board an update. The last meeting I had announced that the town had been awarded a $300,000 grant through the Mass DOT's Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Program. I just want you to know that we've contracted with TC Engineering to get the project moving as fast as possible. As I had repeated before, this is a pedestrian safety improvement grant. And the grant itself is being utilized in a way where we're actually having some professional engineering services to outline which crosswalks and which crosswalks will be done and how they'll be done. They will be looking to potentially reduce the number of conflict areas for residents who would be, or visitors that are trying to cross the main street, which has this incredible wide width. And they're potentially also designing some small refuge islands where these crossings take place with rapid beacons to be able to cross. So we are hoping to move that along and get those measures in place. So you may see some of the survey work. So you may see, um, some of the survey work being done, um, as well. Um, in addition to that, you'll also see surveyors out, uh, for the mass street redesign tip. Um, as you know, we had a forum, uh, with the public, um, prior to Sean Dival's departure, um, in which we were, to make improvements to Main Street as part of a transportation improvement project. Um, that is the state's way of, um, taking a, uh, road, making improvements, um, in which they pay for it. Uh, and because of that, we have to be invited. In your packets, you will see that we received correspondence from the Mass DOT, uh, relative to, um, actually inviting us in, um, to be able to get to the twenty-five percent design, uh, phase. So you will see, um, people actually doing survey work for that. And, um, you know, at the end of the process, Hancock Associates will, um, provide that survey information so that we can continue moving in that direction. If you look at the Mast DOT's invitation, you'll see that, um, the project, um, is anticipated, uh, to cost somewhere about what, four point five million dollars. And if the state can pick up the tab, uh, for it as a tip project, I think we'd all be very happy about that. Um, and not necessarily having it, uh, fall fully on the burden of the, the town. Um, McKinstry Pond Dam Grant, I just wanted to let you know, that is like a seven hundred thousand dollar grant that we applied for the previous year, um, and the year before that. Uh, and last year, I made an effort, uh, with our previous, um, DPW director to make outreach to the dam and seawall grant program. Um, almost a million dollars is a lot of money. Uh, and if we can get any kind of funding, that would be helpful to us. We had already started, uh, with some of the design, but we don't have it completed. Uh, we're close to it. Uh, so we did put in, uh, for this, uh, design, uh, grant in hopes that we can complete that and get the design and permitting done and be able to apply in addition for funding for this. Uh, Bill Hinckley is the, um, grant coordinator. Uh, we had very long discussions and advocacy, um, meetings with him. So I'm hopeful that as we go forward, we'll at least get preliminary grant money for the final, um, grant, uh, engineering and permitting, uh, done. And then maybe we can, uh, be eligible for the next, uh, phase. Uh, the next item is, you'll see, there's a forty B workshop, um, project, um, that we're looking to have, uh, before the Board of Selectmen. Uh, five eighty Main Street, uh, is a potential forty B project in which the housing developers can actually override local zoning bylaws and increase the number of affordable homes in the community. Uh, because this is a project that is moving along in the queue, our, um, Director of Planning, uh, believes it would be helpful, uh, to the Board of Selectmen to have a workshop with our legal counsel to understand, um, as the project moves forward, what are some of the things, um, that relate to a forty B project that might be helpful for this board, which will eventually, um, the project will also be before as well as the, um, the planning, uh, board. So KP Law has offered a workshop, uh, date of March twenty-fourth or March twenty-fifth. Um, if you can, uh, you know, take a look at your schedules and let, um, Dee in the Board of Selectmen's office know, uh, which date might work. And if those dates don't, we can always try to do something a little bit more in the future. But this project is, looks like it's moving pretty quickly through the regular permitting process, um, that it goes through. And now, um, you know, it may, um, be required that the Board of Selectmen have a little bit more knowledge of, of the laws that relate to that. So I don't know what, rather than you trying to look and find out now, if you can let the, the assistant know, that would be helpful. And we'll try to come up with a date that we could do that. Uh, schools re- oh, go ahead. Sorry, just a quick question. Do you know if they're looking at day or evening workshop? I think it's, uh, I think it's whatever, um, whatever the board, um, you know, KP Law is pretty accommodating. So like whatever the boards, what times work well, they'll, they'll make the time to do it. Thank you. Give me a preference. So. I hope that helps.
It did. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Sorry about that. Um, schools reopening on March ninth. The Commissioner for the Massachusetts, um, Department of Elementary and Secondary, uh, Education had announced that the, um, elementary schools would be required to shift their learning model to in-person instruction for five days a week, starting on April fifth. Uh, middle schools will shift the in-person instruction, uh, five days a week, starting April twenty-eighth. Uh, there's no date yet for the high schools at this point. Uh, I just want you to know, I was talking with that public health, uh, contact tracing nurse, uh, today. And one of the things that she did say is that, um, the schools will be embarking on what they call a COVID pool testing, um, which is something that will take place on a regular weekly basis in which the state, uh, will pick up the cause for processing, um, these COVID tests, um, that will be done in, uh, cohorts of ten. Uh, so whether it's ten students in a class, um, ten teachers, however it gets done, um, those, um, test, uh, samples will get sent to a laboratory in Cambridge. And, um, this is their way of trying to look for asymptomatic carriers of COVID to try to keep it out of the public schools. Um, after, that'll go all the way, I think, till April fifteenth or eighteenth. I can't remember what a day. But after that, uh, they anticipate that this will continue to be sort of the model, um, which, um, they will do very, very, uh, rigorous contact tracing in our public schools. And I think that's important, um, to note. And they do have different kind of testing, uh, swabs, um, sample tests, uh, for younger kids, uh, where they can self-administer the, uh, the sample test, uh, for the labs. So. Things like you don't expect, all right? So that would be the way that the schools will have to adjust to opening. Um, library opening update. I know it's come up a couple of times. Our library director has, uh, reported during her monthly meetings that the Library Board of Trustees has been looking at the topic of the library reopening and it's been being discussed. I know that she's provided, I believe, a memo, um, that has been circulated, uh, to the board. And, uh, they're hoping, uh, along with the Board of Trustees, where they're looking at these trends, they really would like to have the staff vaccinated before they open. Um, we can understand that. Um, they've had some COVID employment, um, uh, scares there. And also obviously, we're going to have to look at, uh, the whole entire building, uh, in the way that we would do cleaning at that building, which is one of the reasons we're increasing custodial hours in the budget as well. So, um, I did anticipate that the Board of Trustees will let us know soon, uh, but I wanted to at least provide that update that, uh, and I think that the Board of, of Trustees and the Library Director wanted to give you that information. Uh, the next item is just to let you know, I had talked about, um, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, um, during a finance committee about, um, a waiver application because we had reduced the budget last year in the face of COVID. So on March fourth, um, I'm quite pleased to say that, uh, after petitioning the Board of Library Commissioners, both myself and, um, our Library Director, we were able to, um, have the board vote to approve Oxford's twenty twenty-one, uh, municipal appropriation, uh, requirement waiver request. So that allowed us for this year, um, not to be, um, impacted, uh, negatively by the Massachusetts Library Board. And I want to thank Brittany McDougal for, um, doing a great job with me and presenting our case, uh, to the Library Commissioners and, um, knowing that we're going to make increases to the budget this year. This should not be a problem going forward, as long as we have no more COVID going forward. Ethics test. Uh, just want to alert the board that, um, contained in your correspondence, um, is some, um, information from the town clerk, Michelle Jenkins, and that in your packet, uh, it involves ethics training and test completion. Uh, all boards members must complete the training and test by April second of twenty twenty-one. And if you have any questions, you know, you can get in touch with, um, the clerk's office. Um, the next item, um, I know we have very patient, uh, fire personnel who are on, uh, the Zoom meeting with us tonight. Um, this is, uh, my opportunity to announce that, uh, Chief, um, Lauren McDonald had recognized the need, uh, for reorganizing, um, the Oxford Fire Department Management, uh, Structure, particularly since we've made a solid commitment to keep both stations, both the north and the main headquarters or south station, um, open. Um, tonight, we will be, um, pleased to let the community know that, um, we're eliminating, uh, the position of Assistant Chief, um, and creating, uh, two Deputy Chiefs. Um, and I can't think of a more stronger and competent, uh, team with diverse skills, um, including those that we have in our, uh, current, um, Deputy Chief, uh, John Belanger and those with the incoming, uh, Deputy Chief, um, Ken Sellers. So with that, I'll let the, um, Fire Chief, uh, talk a little bit about this and why, um, he thought it was important. And, um, and I think we can all say, uh, we're in very excellent hands by the competency of, of these two Deputy Chiefs leading the community forward, um, with fire and EMS, um, public safety.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm very pleased to be able to recognize Captain Sellers on his promotion to Deputy Chief. Uh, what the impetus for this was, uh, really essentially can be looked at down to the near miss report from several years ago and the need for firefighter safety. Uh, that coupled with division of labor and what we call in the fire service, unity of command. Everybody works for one boss and span of control, that a supervisor can effectively supervise three, seven people with the optimum being five on an emergency scene. Uh, we, as the manager had said, uh, for years, the Board of Fire Engineers was made up of five chief officers. Um, there were some cuts and changes. Some of those distributions were in the call force. Some of them were in the full-time force. Uh, so now with the, um, that we have nineteen people full-time in the force, it makes sense to have all of that, uh, management vested in the top, um, in, in the full-time force to provide proper supervision on emergency scenes as well as helping with the day-to-day operations. There's been a vacant Assistant Chief's position in the union contract, um, that we negotiated and it was removed. Uh, but it created ba- essentially a tiered process where you had the chief, a deputy chief and an assistant chief. And what we were looking for is a more pyramid structure, uh, for the proper division of labor. And so when looking at this with the two stations and the logistics of, of meeting that, uh, it seemed, uh, to make better sense to have two Deputy Chiefs as a set instead of, uh, just a, uh, following one under the other type of, of rank structure. Uh, what this does for us is this gives us the ability to have three chief officers, one that serves as an incident commander, uh, on an emergency scene, one to serve as a safety officer, because that's something that's needed on every scene and perhaps an accountability chief. Uh, this way here, we can track the large numbers of people that it takes to, to bring a fire under control. NFPA requires us to have an initial response of sixteen firefighters on a working fire. And as the level of complexity of the incident arises, then those numbers tend to increase. Um, so this will help us great, get greater accountability on the fire ground if it provide better supervision and better efficiency. And I can't think of two better people to have working in the command staff at the fire department than John Belanger, uh, who's been there for now a couple of years and also served as interim chief. And now Captain Sellers, who brings his years of experience on the department and the fire service in general to bear, uh, on any fire problem that we have. And, uh, to their credit and to the credit of the men and women of the Oxford Fire and Emergency Services, I, I want to mention to the board that we've had nine fires since January first. And every single one of those fires has been contained to the, either the point or room of origin. And all of this while we're managing an unprecedented pandemic, uh, situation. The men and women are tired, they're working hard, they're very resilient, and I'm very proud of the efforts that they make every day. And thank you for the time to be here tonight. Thank you, Madam Town Manager and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Chief McDonald. That's very good. And, and I, uh, just as a board member, I have to agree with you a hundred percent. I couldn't think of two better individuals. Uh, Chief, uh, Deputy Chief Belanger has been doing a great job. He, uh, he served as interim, uh, chief for a while there and, and he's, he's really a hard worker, good worker. Um, and of course, uh, Captain Sellers to now be, uh, Deputy Chief, same thing. You know, a great, great guy. Uh, you know, he is, uh, he's just always done a stellar job himself. So, uh, it's great. And we'll have, uh, you know, the two stations will be, uh, will have senior men there. So that, that's a great idea as far as I'm concerned. Excellent. Thank you. Board members, any other comments?
I, uh, just want to say congratulations, um, to Deputy Chief Sellers now, um, on the promotion. And then, um, uh, pat on the back for all of you guys, um, for all the hard work that you've been putting in. Uh, I've, you know, I listen to the scanner at home and if I'm able to, I, I try and go out and, uh, watch you guys. If a fire comes in, you know, stay out of the way and whatnot, but still watching the professionalism. Um, if I'm able to make it down there, how, you know, how hard you guys are working. And then even listening to it on the, the scanner, how professional you guys are. Um, so just kudos to you guys and keep up the good work. And congratulations.
Very good. Thank you, Selectman Daniels. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll turn it back over to our Madam Manager. And again, thank you to the entire fire department. Excellent.
Thank you. Um, continuing on with the report, I just want the board to be informed that, um, your office has received a request for an application for an all pouring license, um, in common vic license for, uh, what will be the future, uh, restaurant known as El Patron Corona. Makes me want to have a margarita. Um, El Patron Corona intends to occupy the space, uh, previously held by OX Bar and Grill. And also additionally, um, the restaurant Half Baked and Fully Roasted, uh, love that name, has requested a pouring license. Um, and those items will come before you when they have all of the required documents, but those should be on tap in the near future. Also, just to let you know, since our last meeting, um, I just wanted, uh, the board to be informed that, uh, the status with the, um, uh, host agreement drafting with BVO LLC, um, has begun with, um, our attorney, uh, Mark Rich. I've sent, um, all of the aspects related, uh, to the presentation in our discussions with Mr. Lucas about what we're hoping to have incorporated in there, as well as any feedback I got from, uh, board members about what they were hoping to have in that. I hope to have that, uh, before the board, um, even though, um, you know, those components are being, uh, drafted as we speak. So that's moving along. Um, and I have been in touch with the, uh, business owner to alert them that we're moving in that direction. Um, the Oxford, um, Police Department's informed, um, that they will be receiving, uh, a grant from the, uh, District Attorney's Office, Joe Early, uh, for Operation Graduation. Uh, Sergeant Grenette, um, had applied for these funds to ensure our graduating seniors um, have a safe and substance-free graduation. It's called the ENDD or End Grant, um, and it's in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, every penny is very, very important. Um, and I forgot to put in my report, I don't know how I forgot this, but it's been out on social media, that, that our canine dog has arrived. Um, his name is Zax and, um, and he is the twenty-third officer in the police department. And there'll be a much bigger rollout of this, um, wonderful addition to our, uh, police department. But he is our first, uh, canine dog as a result of this grant, um, and leveraging of the grant that the police chief had done. So we welcome Zax and, uh, excellent, uh, work that, uh, is ahead, uh, for his training officer, who I'm sure will be before this board. Um, and perhaps even Zax will repeat, um, soon. Um, just to let you know, our COVID contact tracing nurses are still at it. Um, as of Sunday, uh, we had, uh, exceeded over one thousand, one hundred and fifteen cases. Um, today, the system was down, so, uh, we expect that we're probably hovering somewhere, um, be about forty-five active cases, which is down from the hundred that we were, um, a couple of weeks ago. But we're still having, um, this crop up of, uh, transmission among family members. And, uh, there have been seven COVID, uh, nineteen-related deaths. And I'm going to just close by encouraging the community and the board to know that the Cecilia Smolensky-Mallett Trust Funds, um, have been advertised, uh, for applications. Um, the Board of Trustees, um, and in this case, the appointees had met and, uh, the application materials have been prepared. There is a formal announcement that is out both in the newspapers and on, uh, social media. And the funding, um, for availability had been announced on March first. And anybody who would like to apply, particularly with regards to children's programming and children's and youth needs, um, please direct, uh, any of those, uh, who might be potential applicants to the town's website for an application. And that, my friends, is the end of the manager's report. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Madam Manager. We go to Selectman announcements. So start with Selectman Tiana.
I just have one quick thing. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I wanted to remind residents who, um, are interested that there is an election in May and that there are open seats, um, in a few different areas. So if people are looking to make the changes that they like to complain about on social media, now would be the time to try to get involved, throw your hat in the ring. Um, there's one seat on the Board of Selectmen, there's two seats on the school committee, there is one seat on the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School District Committee, and there is one. and there is one um Library Trustee position open. So if you are inclined to throw your hat in the ring and get involved, um the last day to pull your nomination papers is Friday, March 26th. So I would encourage you that um now the time, now's the time to be the change if you feel like you need to be a change and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Selectman LeBlanc.
Good evening, everyone, um Mr. Chairman, I see you're in the Board of Selectmen room, does that mean that we're open, are we going back to in-person meetings anytime soon?
Uh no, it's just that uh I I I felt that, you know, after that uh meeting that uh went kinda ballistic, I thought I'd you know, come here where I can be a little more professional than what I'm doing.
Okay, and you got my hopes up, I'm so tired of the word Zoom, I feel like I'm on Zoom half my life, so uh I I got a little excited there when I saw that, when I I was like, oh, maybe, maybe, maybe we're going back, so um the only I I the only thing I have tonight, Mr. Chairman and again, in the essence of time, I haven't changed my clocks, so I think it's 9:15. Um but in the essence of time, is it possible to put on our next meeting? Um I want to have, I'd like to have a discussion about the Main Street redesign. Is it possible if we could put that on for about a five, 10-minute conversation, I just have some questions on it.
Um I'll see how we look, cause I know I I I'll uh if I can, yeah, I I'm not sure what the time, you know. We don't have Karen sitting here anymore where I could just look at the calendar, so. Um but yeah, if possible, we'll we'll put it on for next meeting, yep.
Again, just in the essence of time because of the late hour tonight, so um I just had that and um I think I that was uh that was it, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, uh Selectman Daniels.
Uh just a couple of things this evening, um first thing I want to do is thank uh Joanne from HR for sending out that email this week to the Oxford Town emails uh welcoming the new employees and of course the promotion of Captain Sellers. Um it's nice to, you know, get those names, so hopefully at some point moving through town and the different departments like can put a face with the name and uh know who's new to the team. And then also uh probably should have said it well, the uh Finance Committee was here, but I also sat through and or watched afterwards the uh Finance Committee meetings and um the presentations were very, very helpful that everybody put together. So that was uh great to be able to get an understanding of how COVID impacted all the different departments and how they're moving forward with that. And then also this week, I attended a uh webinar with uh the MMA regarding uh civil discourse in public meetings. In light of recent events at meetings and stuff, I would just I don't know if maybe we can do a workshop as a board to review that webinar, uh I think it would be very beneficial to our board. Um and also, I would really like to highly encourage the board to reconsider and maybe start working together on a on a code of conduct or uh code conduct and stability uh amongst how we work together, how we work with our customers, which is the town. And you know, how we conduct ourselves during business, especially if things start to get out of hand, so it was a really great webinar, the link is on the MMA site now and I would encourage all of you to um not only watch that, but maybe we can put together a webinar and start having discussions of code of conduct policy again. That's that's all I have for this evening.
Alright, thank you very much, uh Selectman Sad.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just uh have one thing, um Saturday, I had the opportunity to present a certificate to Yan O'Nesta on his 100th birthday. I would want to let you know that he made sure that he told me a number of times, make sure you tell each member of the board that I really appreciate them taking the time to to give me the certificate, he was very, very proud of the fact that he was recognized on his 100th birthday by the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager. It was quite an event, uh they had a parade, a car parade that started at the Chaffey School parking lot. The parking lot was full, there must have been between 50 to 75 cars and trucks. Um the Oxford High School band was in the parade. Um the Oxford Memorial Honor Guard, the NRO JTC, it was like uh a mini Memorial Day parade and he was very pleased and very appreciative of the board, so I just wanted to pass that on to you. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much and I have nothing this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd make that motion? Second.
Alright, motion and second, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, it's five in affirmative, we are adjourned, thank you very much.